Good morning, everyone. I call this Committee of the Whole Tuesday, November the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at ten a.m. to order and to acknowledge we are on the traditional territory of the Stahelis. Next order of business, please.
The next order of business is introduction of late items.
I have two late items. I believe Counselor Bydell would like to speak. Go ahead. Can you hear?
Thank you.
So the next was the introduction of late items, and there were two late items here. Counselor Bydell, I believe, wanted to add the rank. Is that correct, Counselor?
I believe I wanted to add that to the regular council meeting agenda, may or not to the Committee of the Whole.
I can't. I didn't quite hear you.
I believe my request was to have that added to the regular council agenda, not the Committee of the Whole agenda.
Okay, I'll remove that one. Thank you. And I have one late item I just want to bring up is add is speed bumps. Next order of business, please.
The next order of business is approval of the agenda.
So do I have a mover for approval of agenda as amended? Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Fazio. Discussion. Call the question, all in favor. Opposed, passes unanimously. Next order of business, please.
The next order of business is items for discussion. And item A is the report of the Chief Administrative Officer regarding council meeting location.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So the issue at hand today is mayor council would like to discuss council meeting locations, the background to how.
Sorry, sorry, I hit the wrong button.
Okay, on May fourth, two thousand and twenty, a co- or sorry, council passed the following motions that meetings of council be relocated to Memorial Hall until such time as a need for physical distancing related to the COVID nineteen pandemic are no longer deemed necessary, and that an expenditure of up to thirty thousand dollars to be funded from surplus be provide, or sorry, approved to fund the installation of audiovisual improvements to Memorial Hall to facilitate and hold the holding of public meetings, and that was in support of a health order at that time. On October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, council passed the following motion that council meetings and public hearings remain at Memorial Hall until decision of council. On January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, council passed the following motion that council meetings be permanently relocated to the village office as soon as possible with up to five thousand dollars allocated to relocate audiovisual equipment to the village office to be funded from taxation and up to fifteen thousand dollars to purchase furnishings for council chambers to be funded from office equipment reserves. On, further on October sixteenth, that the matter of moving council meetings back to the Memorial Hall be referred to the next Committee of the Whole meeting. And that's where we are today. So Memorial Hall as a council chamber is using Memorial Hall as a council chamber reduces availability of the hall for one or two Mondays per month. Having meetings at Memorial Hall provides more space for council, staff, and the public. The current audiovisual equipment is installed as a temporary system during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Due to the number of complaints that village staff received from council and the public, council will need to consider an additional investment of up to forty-five thousand dollars for new permanent audiovisual equipment at Memorial Hall. Should it, or it should be noted that converting Memorial Hall between the use of council chambers and other events takes approximately six hours of staff time per event, one hour for two people to take down the equipment and tables, one hour to clean and one or or one hour for two people to set up, and one hour for administrative time to reconnect and test I T and audiovisual equipment. Village offices and council chambers for summer months. To maximize availability and cost return potential for Memorial Hall, council must temporarily relocate to the village office for three council meetings, one per month held in July, August, and September. The village made a significant investment in two thousand and twenty-three to the village chambers audiovisual system to accommodate online engagement in persons with accessibility challenges. Gallery seating is available for up to twenty people from the, of the public. There will be no additional financial implications. Can you continue this practice? Public hearings may continue to be held in person at Memorial Hall as needed. Financial implications. Staff recommend recommends upgrading the Zoom video conferencing software used to host electronic meetings at a cost of up to fifteen hundred dollars annually. The upgraded version of Zoom will allow staff to manage online engagement more efficiently. Online meetings viewer, viewers, sorry, online meeting viewers have increased significantly, however, electronic permission participation during question period is rarely utilized. Rough estimates from the village audiovisual supplier for permanent equipment at Memorial Hall, including built-in speakers, new audio mixer, new speakers, new video camera, and additional requirements will cost up to forty-five thousand dollars. The options in front of council this afternoon that staff are recommending. Option one is keep council meetings at the village office council chambers and move to Memorial Hall for public hearings. Move council meetings back to Memorial Hall as soon as possible without the upgrade, the, without upgrading the audiovisual equipment and move back to the village office council chambers for the summer months. And option three is move council meetings back to Memorial Hall as soon as possible with up to forty-five thousand dollars allocated to upgrade audiovisual equipment to be funded from surplus and move back to the village office council chambers for the summer months.
Thank you. Do I have a mover for option three, which is to move council meetings back to Memorial Hall as soon as possible with up to forty-five thousand allocated to upgrade audiovisual equipment to be funded from surplus and move to the village office council chambers for the summer months? Do I have a mover? Moved by Counselor, Counselor Jackson.
Mister Mayor, I, I would.
Order, order, moved by Counselor Jackson, seconded by Counselor Allen. Discussion. Counselor Allen.
Yes, Mister Mayor, I was about to suggest that I would like to move option number two, not option number three. But since we have the motion on the floor, I want to announce that I'll be voting against option number three because I think that option number two is a much preferable solution.
Further discussion?
Is it possible that we could discuss all three options? Because the motion on the floor kind of limits our discussion only to option number three.
The, the motion on the table right now, Counselor, is, is option number three.
Understood.
So it was moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor. Opposed. Motion, motion fails with Counselor Bydell, Fazio, and Allen opposed. Move to option number two here.
I would be prepared to move option number two, Mister Mayor.
So moved by Counselor Allen. We don't need a seconder. I forgot about that. Discussion on option two, which is to move council meeting back to Memorial Hall as soon as possible without upgrading the audiovisual equipment and move back to the village office council chambers for the summer months. Any discussion? Counselor Bydell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Wood. Through you to our C E O, I know one of the concerns withholding council meetings here at Memorial Hall had to do with a potential conflict between Festival of the Arts and their concerts. Have you had an opportunity to speak with Festival of the Arts? And if that is still a concern for them, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, we did speak to them, and the event that they hold during the summer was one of the reasons why we wanted to continue the practice of moving because it is quite a significant event for the village. And that was a consideration for keeping the existing practice of going back to the village office council chambers for summer months.
Thank you. I also know that they run a program once a month during the winter, and often concerts are held here on the Saturday evening. So they don't see that as an impediment with moving meetings back here during that time also. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a discussion and a consideration, and with the the Sunday breakdown and with all day Monday to be able to complete the clean and change, it should work out fine.
Thank you. I will vote in favor of option number two. I have no difficulty with moving back here, however, I would be in opposition of spending any additional funds on upgrading audiovisual equipment here. We do need to look in the future of a new civic center or village off, office, which conceivably would include larger and expanded council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen, and then Fazio next.
Yes, Mister Mayor, I'm very much in favor of option two with a couple of reservations. There was within that recommendation, there was a recommendation to spend quite a lot of money on audiovisual equipment. Having spent a lot of time in the public gallery of this particular venue, I would have to say that I don't think that it's necessary to spend so much money. The single speaker that we have on that corner is really the only way that people in the audience, unless they're very close, can hear the discussion at the council table. And I think that by simply adding one more speaker, either moving that to the center or what, putting one more speaker on this side would change that quite dramatically, and that wouldn't cost us any money. I also think that maybe this format that we have with all these tables is maybe not necessary anymore since the COVID threat, while it hasn't gone away completely, is much reduced. And I can recall holding council meetings here with just the three tables here, staff table on one side, and all the chairs quite a bit closer and a lot less chairs. We seldom will get sixty or eighty people here. And if more than the usual thirty or so, forty show up, it's always possible to bring the chairs in from the sidewall. So I'm very much in favor of moving to Memorial Hall because I believe that we have an obligation to provide the opportunity, at the very least, for people to attend in person. And I don't see the twenty seats that we have at the village office hall to be adequate to fulfill that obligation and guarantee those people their civic rights to attend and observe our council meetings. I really think that, that we need to sharpen our pencil when it comes to these expenditures. The setup with a simpler system would be, if you could cut that to three R setup, I think that would be adequate. And I, I'd like to suggest that staff investigate the possibility of that, or indeed try a smaller format on an experimental basis at the next couple of meetings to see how it works, and I'm talking about three tables for the council members, one or two tables for the staff, and moving the chairs, less of the chairs in closer and changing the speaker location. That's my suggestion, and I'm in favor of number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fazio.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I will be voting against number two. When this hall was built by the volunteers many years ago and sold to the village, it was meant as a community hall for events and people to gather. It was never suggested or meant as council chambers. If it hadn't been for the pandemic, we wouldn't be here. We'd be still in the, at the village office where we've had council chambers for many years with public hearings there, elections, and everything else. Now we were mandated during the pandemic to bring in electronic ability for the residents and has was said by our C E O earlier on, more people now are watching this on Zoom. Especially I would feel that during the winter months, more people will be watching it on Zoom than coming out to the, to a council meeting. So we've given the people the ability to either come, if they can come to the village office and fit in. If not, well, they can stay home and they're comfortable at their home and watch on Zoom, and they still have the ability to ask a question as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jackson, did you have anything? You ready for the question? Call the question, all in favor. I've actually called the, I've called the question. That question's been called, Counselor. All in favor?
On a point of order, I think the person moving the motion gets a chance to speak at the end before the vote.
All in favor, ready to call the question. We've called the question. All in favor. Opposed. Counselor Jackson, I didn't see your hand. So I, I, I'll, I'm gonna do the vote again. All in favor? Opposed. Motion passes with Counselor Fazio opposed. Just before we, we move on to the next item, and I just noticed in the report that staff were recommending an upgrade here to the Zoom video conferencing software. Do we need a motion on the floor here for, for that fifteen hundred dollars to our Chief Administrative Officer?
Thank you. I think we can wrap that into our operational budget. We're, we're finding that the current version that we have is the entry level, and it is a bit of a challenge for staff to keep people from turning on their microphones and their cameras and such, so that, that'll be fine. Thank you.
So, so no motion is required. Correct. Thank you. Next, next item, please.
The next item is item B, Report of Operations Manager Regarding Geographic Information System.
Thank you. The village currently has an agreement with Fraser Valley Regional District to operate a geographic information system that maps village assets and property data under the F B R D's license. The G I S system currently used as an internal resource includes map layers such as the water, storm, and sanitary sewer system, lighting, and other assets such as garbage cans and pickings tables. G I S is a system that municipalities commonly use to manage and analyze data on a virtual map. F B R D I T staff advise the village that the G I S system may become a public resource accessed through the village's website. F B R D is currently working on similar projects with other municipalities to make their G I S system public. Adding new mapping layers, making the system publicly available will enhance public awareness, increase service to the community, and allow the village to use the system to its full potential. Additional mapping layers could be added to our system, which could include emergency evacuation routes, active wildfires, flood control, trucking routes, and road conditions. The village's two thousand and twenty-three strategic plan identifies public safety as a strategic priority. Making the G I S system publicly available and adding additional mapping layers could contribute to public safety and assist in furthering council's strategic priorities. There is no cost associated to making the service available on the village's website and adding additional mapping layers. To enhance village operations, G I S could be utilized by staff to streamline operations and provide detailed information on assets. The use of this technology in the field will provide for greater efficiency for, by allowing staff to have more access to information related to daily tasks and inspections. To expand G I S usability and function for village operations, the village would require two tablets for field usage at a cost of up to three thousand dollars. Recommendation is that staff be authorized to work with Fraser Valley Regional District to add mapping layers to the village's geographic information system and make the system publicly available on the village's website, and that staff be authorized to purchase two tablets for field usage of the G I S mapping system at a cost of up to three thousand dollars.
Thank you, Counselor. So the recommendation is that staff be authorized to work with the Fraser Valley Regional District to adding mapping layers to the village's geographic information system and make the system publicly available on the village's website, and the staff be authorized to purchase. I'm gonna separate these two. So I am, do I have a mover on, on that item? May, Mayor Wood? Moved by Counselor Fazio. Any discussion?
Is a seconder not required in C E O?
No, we're in the Committee of the Whole.
So no seconder required, just for clarification. I'd like to speak against the motion, Mister Mayor. I'm all in favor of G I S. I think it's good technology if properly used and applied. But I'm very concerned about the release to the public of the village's G I S mapping. And my concern is that the village should be viewed and should be trusted to provide good information to the public. The current G I S map, as I discovered on reviewing the base map for the proposed official community plan, is grossly inaccurate in many places. I pointed this out during the public hearing. I volunteered to go and work with the cartographer at the regional district in order to correct the maps, but I was not given that opportunity. Today, in my opinion, it would be it would be grossly irresponsible to use the current G I S mapping for any purpose, including the O C P, and even more irresponsible to make it available to the public on an online basis because it is not accurate. The mapping, I understand there are some challenges in transitioning from the old-fashioned system where the surveyors would prepare the surveys, the land registry would approve it. We would get a copy, and that would become part of our infrastructure. In the transition of putting those survey, that survey information onto a G I S database, we have failed to do so accurately. And I believe that when I was reviewing the base map for the O C P, I found thirteen pieces of public property owned by the village that don't show up on the map as being owned by the village. Parkland that we got the title to through subdivision registration isn't on the map. So I'm thoroughly opposed to making the G I S mapping base available from the village or from the regional district until such times as the maps are rendered accurate. And I think that is our responsibility as a level of government to provide good, accurate information to the public, and I look forward to being able to do so when our base maps have been corrected. So I'm opposed to the motion as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, I, I just have a few questions myself here. I'm pleased to see this, the G I S system. I think that for our small village here to even be where, at the stage of where it is now is, is commendable. I think the, the system has, I mean, there's a lot of growth to it. I think that there's a lot of excellent components to it in the, in the sense of record management. Drawings can be attached to, to the G I S system. So as we change over in staff in the future years, all this stuff can be tied to that map. So I think that this G I S is an extremely valuable feature for, for us to have. Just a couple of questions to our operations manager if he's able to help me on this. So from what I can see, we, we have a very, very basic information that's on here. Do we have a date approximately of what? What, when this information was, was from?
Thank you. I don't have an exact date of when this was from. I know staff in the past have worked with Fraser Valley Regional District to upload information to it. It's something that moving forward, and want to continue to add any update drawings and kind of get accurate accurate locations for. But I, at this moment, I don't have an exact date of when this was all uploaded.
Thank you. Just a few more questions on this, the same idea. So just help me understand, like, the, so the Fraser Valley Regional District are, are, I guess, hosting, or they host the technology? Do, do, does the village actually have access to upload the information, or does it all have to be sent to the Fraser Valley Regional District to our operations manager?
Thank you. Yes, so Fraser Valley Regional District has G I S operators, and they hold our license. So anytime information needs to be updated, we would send it to them. This way, we don't have to have internal G I S staff.
Just a few more questions on that. Is there a cost associated with that each time? Is there an annual license, or how does that work?
Can I refer this to our C E O? Our Chief Financial Officer?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. Thank you. We do have an agreement with the F B R D. It is a yearly fee. Don't quote me on what that number is. The, we, in the past, we set it up to be quarterly. If we're gonna do updates, we'll just compile as-built information as it's provider, as we receive it, and then we'll forward it to them. Typically, we're on a more frequent basis, they're confirming fire hydrant locations to confirm whether there's been anything added.
Thank you. So just for clarifications, and I mean, I had a look at it, and there, you know, there is a lot of information which, which isn't on there, which I know is there. Is, is that because of, of a shortage of our staff? Is it a shortage of funding? What do we need to do to, to bring, what would staff like to see to bring this up to date? To our, to our Chief Administrative Officer?
Thank you. As, the way I understand it is that all it'll take is village staff to work with F B R D staff to create these plans. I don't believe there's an additional cost to it, but I'll have to refer to the operations manager to confirm that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. No, there's no additional cost to working with, with them to update our system. That's just something we'll have to continue to do and to look back on previous records to make sure everything's up to date and accurate.
Thank you. Again, I just want to elaborate on it. I think that this is a great system. I hope we take, take full advantage of it. And if there's something that council can do to expedite or help staff with that process, I would look forward to seeing that report come back to council.
Mister Mayor?
Counselor, Counselor Allen.
Yes, can I ask a technical question?
Go ahead.
I'm just trying to understand how the base map gets put together. As I understand it, the, anytime there is a subdivision in the village of Harrison Hot Springs, the subdivision map is first of all registered, the land registry. And I presume that's a G I S process, too. How does that land registry subdivision plan get into our G I S mapping? Does the regional district pick it up straight from land registry? Does it have to come here first and go there? And what's the process for that to happen?
Go ahead. Thank you. That process I'm unsure of, but I could, that's something that we could refer to F B R D staff to, to find out the process of.
On that same point, then, my primary concern and what is, what is illustrated to me, the inaccuracies in the map is the fact that the current G I S map does not identify the village-owned parkland that we have throughout the village. And just for the information of perhaps people who may be listening, the process is that at the time of subdivision, the subdivision map, if it has a parcel of land associated with it or within the subdivision, that is to become a village park. All they have to do is to write the word park, P A R K. all they have to do is to write the word park, P-A-R-K, on that piece of land. And upon registration at the land title office, the title to that land transfers from the private owner developer to the village of Harrison Hot Springs. So, what I, what I'm seeing is that, that, uh, I know that there have been subdivisions, and I know that we have had the, the transfer of ownership of certain pieces of land to the village as parkland, but I don't see them appearing on the current map as park or as being under our ownership. So, I would, I mean, that, that's just, I hope that's not just the tip of the iceberg. There may be others that I haven't seen. I would still like the opportunity to go over our base map with the cartographers doing the GIS of Fraser Valley Regional District. But until such times as we are, uh, or I at least am assured of the accuracy of those maps, I think that there should be a disclaimer on the map saying it's not necessarily accurate. And we would then work towards the point where it could be guaranteed to be accurate and complete. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna just ask our Chief Administrative Officer, but I thought there, there is a disclaimer that, uh, that it is not accurate. Is that correct?
That is correct. The, the idea of a, uh, GIS system is it's a general representation. Uh, it's, uh, you know, as Counselor Allen pointed out, it can have, uh, some weak points. So, you will take it for information only, and if you require further information, uh, as per if it was, uh, uh, a piece of property, then I would recommend anybody that they do a title search to confirm who owns it or what, uh, designation for the property, if it's park. Um, and also, uh, the, uh, if, if it's being used for engineering or design purposes, uh, any engineer would, uh, just use the information that we were providing as backup information, and they would still do a survey on their own to complete their, uh, their design.
Thank you. Any further questions on that, Counselor Allen? Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Did you? Any other further, any other discussion? So, ready to call the question. That is that staff be authorized to work with the Fraser Valley Regional District to add mapping layers to the village's geographical sys, information system and make the system publicly available on the village's website? So, I called the question, all in favor? Nobody opposed. Motion passes unanimously. The next item on that was that staff be authorized to purchase two tablets for field usage of the GIS mapping system at a cost of up to three thousand dollars. Do I have a mover on that?
Your recommendation?
I moved by Counselor Vidal. And discussion. Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mayor Wood, for you to staff. Couple of questions. We're, would, um, two tablets be sufficient, or, uh, would it be advantageous um, to have more? Um, and also this expenditure, will that come from, uh, surplus or from, uh, operational budget or, um, some other line item? Thank you.
To our operations manager?
Thank you. I'd like to start off with just two tablets, um, as we work into the system. I would like to have it on a, um, a checkout basis, so as needed, staff can check it out and, and start using it. Um, that could be something we look at in the future to, to add more, but I think for now, we started, um, getting everyone introduced, training, and then you can build up from that if, if, uh, requirements need. Financial?
Thank, when, and the financial aspect that I brought up, could you comment on that one? Thank you.
Thank you, uh, through Mayor Wood to Counselor Vital. Um, I would recommend that we work this into the twenty twenty-four, uh, budget, and then, uh, it would be just funded through operation, uh, taxation, basically.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor, is this the Counselor Vidal? You're, you're finished? Yes, thank you. Uh, Counselor Allen, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. At the risk of sounding like a Luddite, uh, who's against all technology, I'm not in favor of the two tablets. I think that there's a danger with modern technology that we become separated from reality. And with such a small village as we have, with such a very limited amount of infrastructure, I don't really see the need for somebody going out into the field to have the tablet. Because, uh, our staff should know where our roads, streets, parks, and infrastructure exists. And, uh, to me, it would seem to be an overuse and not a necessary use of technology to be looking at a tablet when you're on the ground within two minutes of City Hall to actually see it in person. So, I, I'm actually gonna vote against the motion because I don't think it's necessary in such a small community as ours to have tablets. I also think that, that we do have a fairly good supply of laptops within the village equipment, and these same GIS maps should be available to anybody on a laptop instead of a tablet. So, I don't understand why a tablet is necessary when, well, everybody has a laptop. When the, the laptops, uh, could arguably do a better job because they have a bigger screen than a tablet will have. This is effectively the same piece of equipment, so it's sounds redundant to have a laptop and a tablet. Thank you.
Thank you. It's my understanding, and I'll get the operations manager to comment on it, but that the tablets would be used for the staff when they're out in the field, when they're actually getting information such as the inverts, elevations, is, uh, would I like, operations manager like to elaborate on that?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Yes, that is correct. It'd be, um, for staff and for locations, um, finding water utilities, um, sewer utilities. Um, and then also something we can tie this into, um, for, um, doing inspections as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Ready to call the question. So, would the staff be authorized to purchase two tablets for field usage of the GIS mapping system at a cost of up to three thousand dollars? All in favor? Opposed. Motion passes with, uh, Counselor Allen opposed. Next item, please.
The next item is Item C, Report from Our Community Services Manager Regarding Proposed Woods Park Playground Update.
Yeah, I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna call this one here out of order due to procedural fairness. Um, we go around in circles here on some of these things, and this one's coming around in circles a number of times. Um, but there was a survey that was done, um, quite a number of months ago. And the survey, um, there were hiccups in the survey. Um, but again, I'm gonna go back to procedural fairness. Um, and the survey was put out, there was a time period put in. Um, and when that time period ends, um, the survey ends. I, I'm still getting emails and letters and correspondence on this subject today. Um, that process should have been closed. Council can't keep revisiting this. Staff have been involved, and it keeps coming around and around and around. So, again, I'm trying to implement some procedural fairness, um, process to it. The survey was done, while it was not done properly, council decided to continue on with this. Um, again, I'm going to rule this one out of order. Next item, please.
Mayor Wood, I'm gonna call point of order. The agenda has already been approved with this item on it.
Counselor, Counselor Vidal, I am having a very hard time hearing you with your mask on.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm calling point of order, Mayor Wood.
This, I still.
Is that better? Thank you. I'm calling point of order. Um, this, um, we've approved the agenda as amended, and this, uh, was included on the, on the agenda, which, which was approved. Um, I think we need to go forward with discussion on this, uh, agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Mayor Wood, I'm calling a point of order, and it is.
Counselor Vidal, you're out of order, please?
I am not out of order, Mayor Wood. I'm calling point of order, which requires you to make a ruling on the point of order.
Counselor Vidal. Next item, please.
I'm calling point of order, Mayor Wood.
Counselor Vidal.
I am calling point of order, Mayor Wood. All discussion stops.
Next, next order of business, please. Counselor Vidal, you are out of order. Please sit down.
I am not out of order. I am calling point of order.
Counselor Fazio, you don't have the floor. Counselor Fazio, you do not have the floor. Next item, please. Your point of order was overruled. Next item, please. Next order of business, please.
Point of order, Mayor Wood. All discussion stops when a point of order is.
You do not have the floor. Please sit down.
Calling point of order.
Counselor Vidal.
My calling point of order, Mayor Wood.
Counselor Vidal, please sit down.
I am calling point of order. You have cut off my mic. I am calling point of order.
Counselor Vidal, please sit down.
I am calling point of order, Mayor Wood. According to procedural bylaw, when a point of order is called.
You're out of, you are out of order. You are out, I ruled.
What is the ruling?
Continue on with the next item. Thank you.
You have to rule on the point of order.
I've ruled on the point of order, Counselor Vidal.
What is the ruling, please?
Your ruling is not accepted. Thank you. I voted cor- correctly. Next, we have moved on to the next item. Counselor Vidal.
Order has not been ruled on.
Counselor Vidal.
I'm calling point of order, Mayor Wood.
Counselor, Counselor Allen, no comments.
Of order, Mayor Wood.
Please.
I'm calling point of order.
Next item, please.
Point of order, Mayor Wood.
As per the community charter, Counselor Fazio, you do not have the floor.
I'm calling point of order. I've explained the point of order, Mayor Wood, that the agenda has been approved, and you cannot remove items from the agenda once it has been approved.
Counselor Vidal, please sit down.
Calling point of order, Mayor Wood. You need to rule on the point of order.
Counselor Allen, you're out of order. The point of order has been ruled on. Please sit down, Counselor Vidal. The ruling was to continue to the next item. I have addressed your point of order, Counselor Vidal. Counselor Vidal, you are out of order. Please sit down, so we can continue on with the meeting. Counselor. Counselor, Counselor Vidal, please sit down.
Counselors and.
Counselor Fazio, you don't have the floor. Counselor Fazio. Vidal, please sit down. Next item, please. Counselor Vidal, please remove yourself from the meeting. Counselor, Counselor Vidal, I have nicely asked you to sit down. I have made a decision. I made a decision, Counselor. Counselor Vidal, please sit down. I've asked. Counselor Vidal, please sit down or remove yourself from the meeting. Next item, please. Next item, please. Next item, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
You're out of order, Counselor.
I think a motion to adjourn is always in order. I would make that motion.
Discussion. Called the question, all in favor of adjournment? We are adjourned. Counselor Fazio and Counselor Vidal opposed. Is that correct? Thank you. We are adjourned.